I mean, my issues never, not with the top part, and I don't have any issue with developing the back part. My issue is with the density level on that back part.
You'll do that, I'll handle this.
Okay. Y'all ready?
I am.
I'd like to call the January ninth meeting of the New Hanover County Planning Board to order. I'd like to welcome everyone in the audience. If I could remind you, if you're here in the audience, to please turn off or silence all of your mobile devices. If you plan on speaking tonight, please make sure that you've signed in. A reminder that our meetings are closed captioned for public broadcasts, so please make sure, if you are speaking tonight and you do approach the podium, that you make sure you speak loudly and clearly into the microphone so that everyone, not only here but at home, can hear and understand you. At this time, if everyone will please rise for the saying of our Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand as one nation, unregatta, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a little bit of housekeeping to take care of tonight. We have some minute approvals that are needed. The October third, twenty twenty-four Planning Board Agenda Review. Those minutes were provided to all board members prior to our meeting. At this point, are there any changes, or will we entertain a motion? We will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to be approved, as written.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That whole close.
And Mr. Chair, I will just clarify, that was a typo on my end. Those are for the regular meeting minutes from October third.
Thank you, Ms. Rawl. Record may reflect that those minutes are for the October third regular meeting, not the Agenda Review. The items from tonight's meeting will go forward to the County Commissioners' meeting tentatively scheduled for Monday, February third, twenty twenty-five. The meeting will begin at approximately four o'clock PM and be held here in the New Hanover County Historic Courthouse. Because there'll be no Planning Board votes on the items heard tonight, due to the quasi-judicial nature of those items, there will be no Planning Board representative attending that meeting. In accordance with the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners' resolution adopting a Code of Ethics adopted on January fourth, twenty sixteen, it is the duty of all county boards and committees to respect and abide by the New Hanover County Code of Ethics and the performance of their duties. More specifically, all Planning Board members should, number one, obey all applicable laws; two, uphold the integrity and independence of the board; three, avoid impropriety; four, faithfully perform the duties of the office; and five, conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. It is further the duty of every board member to avoid conflicts of interest as defined in North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter one sixty D, Section one oh nine. Does any member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matters coming before the board this evening? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in the particular matter involved. During tonight's meeting, we will hold a preliminary forum for two special use permit applications for one development project. The purpose of this preliminary forum is to facilitate an open and transparent discussion of the special use permit applications and to provide an opportunity for public comments and questions. Please note, per state law, the Planning Board will not be making a decision or recommendation this evening. Instead, the decision on the applications will be made during the Board of Commissioners' quasi-judicial hearing, where public participation will be limited to parties with standing and witnesses providing evidence through sworn testimony. Anyone interested in speaking in support or opposition of the project should sign in and speak tonight at this meeting regardless of standing in the matter. Staff will introduce the application. Then the applicant will be allowed, the applicant, excuse me, will be allowed time for their presentation. Following the applicant's presentation, we will have time for public questions and comments, and then allow the applicant time to address them. We can move forward under two options. Either the applicant will be provided fifteen minutes for their presentation, and there will be twenty minutes total for public questions and comments. Or option B, or two, which is because it's a preliminary forum, is for two separate special use permit applications, and we have a number of people signed up to speak. If it's the pleasure of the board, I would like to extend the time available for the applicant presentation to thirty minutes, and for public questions and comments to forty minutes. After the applicant has had an opportunity to address public questions and comments, the board members will give, or will then provide, their comments and ask questions that they might have. At the end, staff will give an overview of the next steps in the special use permit process, and we will then close the forum. Is my understanding at this time, there are six people currently signed up to speak in opposition? Is that correct, Ms. Rawl?
That is what I was last told. The administrative coordinator is talking with someone, so I cannot confirm, but the last report I got was six folks signed up in opposition.
Mr. Chair, do you want a motion on changing that? If there's anyone who has not signed up to speak in opposition to the project, and you would like to be heard, please make sure that you have signed up or do sign up in the back on the sign-in sheet. So for the board, there are six folks signed up in opposition, and we do have the applicant who needs to be provided their time on both applications. We've got two options here. I can go back over them if you'd like, but we do need to determine how we'd like to move forward. We have option A, where we give the applicant fifteen minutes for their presentation and twenty minutes total for public questions and comments. And option B, because there are two special app, permanent, special use permit applications, and we do have what I believe to be seven, I think now, folks signed up in opposition, if it's the pleasure of the board, we can extend the time available to thirty minutes for applicant presentation and for public comments, or for questions and public comments to forty minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, considering the quasi-judicial nature of this, I would make a motion that we go with option two, to extend this to the thirty-minute approach, because that way we can look at this from a holistic approach.
And just to make clear, that would be applicant presentation to thirty minutes, public questions and comments would be extended to forty minutes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, a question. I want to make sure that we are, we are hearing, the thirty minutes is allotted for both special use applications. The presentation will include thirty minutes for both.
So a total of thirty minutes. That's my understanding.
I would second that motion.
So there is a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
One?
No.
Just one. Motion does carry. We will move forward under the option B. The applicant shall be allotted thirty minutes for their presentation as to both permits, and the public questions and comments section of the, of tonight's hearing will be extended So in that vein, I shall move forward with calling out both special use permits that are on the agenda for this morning for the preliminary forum. Special use permit S two four dash oh four, multifamily in B two, a request by Bay Shore Townhomes LLC as applicant on behalf of B-Safe Porter's Neck LLC property owners for a special use permit for a sixty-two unit multifamily development with eighteen hundred square feet of commercial space and a B two regional business district on a three-point-two-one acre parcel of land located at eighty-one thirty-eight Market Street. And special use permit S two four dash oh five, an additional dwelling allowance request by Bay Shore Townhomes LLC applicant on behalf of Herbert Parham, property owner, for a special use permit for an additional dwelling allowance of, for two-hundred-and-forty-two row-style dwelling units in an R fifteen residential district on a thirty-point-twenty-two acre parcel of land located at the eighty-one-hundred block of Market Street. Mr. Farrell, we can hear from staff.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. As you've heard, this is a preliminary forum for two special use permit requests involving a multifamily in a residential, sorry, multifamily residential in a B two district and an additional dwelling allowance in an R fifteen district. I'll first give an overview of preliminary forums and criteria used in considering these projects before getting into the specifics of the request. So the preliminary forums are not public hearings, and neither the Planning Board nor Planning Staff make a recommendation on the request. Preliminary forums are informational and are a chance for the Planning Board to give comments and suggestions to the applicant and public on potentially relevant and material evidence, findings of fact, and issues or areas the Board of Commissioners may need more information about to reach a retired, to reach a required conclusion. The Board of Commissioners will need to hold a quasi-judicial hearing, which is a formal type of hearing that requires the board to determine whether a project meets four required findings: that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and approved; the use meets all required conditions and specifications of the Unified Development Ordinance; the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or the use as a public necessity; and the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan for New Hanover County. So as you heard, the property owner's consideration is located along the eighty-one-hundred block of Market Street. This site will be familiar to most of the board. It was the subject of a rezoning request in early twenty twenty-four. The applicants ultimately withdrew the request at the January twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting. The aerial photography shows an existing vacant commercial building located here, boarded by commercial development along Market Street, and a tree farm to the southeast boarded by single-family residential. Here's an aerial photo of the site, images of the property from different angles. Let's clear that. Parcels were originally zoned R fifteen in the nineteen-seventies. At the time, the purpose of the district was to provide lower density, was to provide lower-density housing due to the need for private wells and septic systems. Since then, public water and sewer has become available in the area. The B two portion was zoned in nineteen eighty-five for compatibility with a business in operation at the time. This is the combined site plan of the two requests. The section outlined in blue is Zone B two, which allows residential dwelling units as part of a mixed-use development with approval of a special use permit. Section outlined in red is Zone R fifteen, which allows increases to the base density of the district for additional dwelling allowances with approval of a special use permit. The ordinance requirements for each type of special use permit are different, which requires the two separate special use permit applications. The applicant has proposed conditions that neither project could be developed without approval of both special use permits. Due to the relationship between the two projects, staff has included both in one presentation and in one staff summary. Combined, the projects include a total of eighteen hundred square feet of commercial space and three hundred and four dwelling units consisting of sixty-two multifamily units and two-hundred-and-forty-two row-style dwellings. Unified Development Ordinance states multifamily dwellings in a B two district must be part of a mixed-use development established to provide innovative opportunities for an integration of diverse but compatible uses into a single development. Additional standards generally address requirements for mixed-use development, pedestrian infrastructure, use restrictions, shared parking, common areas, and a requirement for building elevations. The site plan for the B two request includes a mixed-use building with commercial space and multifamily units fronting Market Street. The second building is proposed as multifamily units as well. The applicant's project narrative caps the total unit count to sixty-two, but would allow the site, sorry, would allow the site to be reconfigured with three buildings instead of two. If approved as part of the special use permit, that change would be allowed administratively by staff. The density of the B two portion of the project is nineteen-point-three dwelling units per acre. The UDO does not set a prescribed or maximum residential density for mixed-use development. Multifamily developments in the B two district are required to include a mixed-use component that is limited to only uses permitted in the B one district. While the TIA, Traffic Impact Analysis, analyzes the project as a retail use, other land uses in the B one district could be allowed. Parking is provided throughout the site and is proposed as shared parking between the multifamily dwellings and the commercial use. The concept plan also includes the proposed location of exterior light poles. Sidewalks are provided around the perimeter of both buildings, shown on the plan, with the sidewalk along the road to access the proposed row-style dwellings on the R fifteen portion of the project. One of the requirements for the special use permit application is submitting proposed building elevations. This is for the commercial component, and this is for the multifamily portion of that The ordinance standards for additional dwelling allowances are different from a typical performance residential subdivision. For example, the base density may be increased up to ten-point-two dwelling units per acre. The special use permit request is for a maximum of eight-point-three-seven dwelling units per acre. Minimum of open space requirements is thirty-five percent. There is an impervious surface limit of forty percent, and there is a perimeter setback of twenty-five feet, which is slightly large, slightly higher than the setback for performance residential. In addition, the maximum height in the R fifteen district is forty feet. However, additional dwelling allowances require structures over twenty-five feet tall adjacent to single-family residential to be setback equal to the height of the building. The applicant has also included a condition restricting the homes to a maximum of three stories, not to exceed forty feet. The site plan for the additional dwelling allowance includes an amenity center, stormwater and open space, a condition to provide an overland relief path such as a drainage ditch or swale within a public drainage easement from the natural pond to the stormwater The homes are centered on the site, with the row closest to the Porter's Point subdivision sighted away from existing homes and toward the adjacent open space. The ordinance requires, again, a minimum thirty-five-foot setback around the perimeter of the site. The applicant has also included a condition that retains a minimum thirty-five-foot landscape buffer in addition to the spatial buffer of existing vegetation around the site. A road stub is also provided to Braze Drive that will be gated for emergency access only. A condition has been included guaranteeing a bike and pedestrian connection to that Braze Drive. And while not required by the ordinance, the applicants have also provided conceptual elevations of the proposed row-style homes. Project is estimated to increase AM traffic, but would reduce PM peak hour trips compared to what could be developed in the current zoning. The estimated traffic generated from the site is over the one-hundred peak hour threshold that triggers the ordinance requirements for Traffic Impact Analysis. The site has existing access to Market Street and to Braze Drive. The combined projects propose a right-in, right-out-only access on the Market Street with a gated emergency access only on the Braze. The TIA requires an extended right-turn lane into the site and a traffic light at Cypress Pond Way. Vehicles wanting to travel south would be able to utilize U-turns at Cypress Pond Way or the Porter's Neck intersection. The site is also just south of the I-one-forty interchange. The Comprehensive Plan designates this property as general residential and urban mixed use. The majority of the property is general residential, which encourages single-family and duplex residential development at a maximum density of eight dwelling units per acre. The urban mixed-use place type promotes multifamily and higher-density single-family development to provide a range of housing types, opportunities, and choices. The urban mixed-use place type does not recommend a maximum density. Because of the general nature of place-type borders, sites located in proximity to the boundaries between place types could be appropriately developed with either place type, allowing site-specific features and evolving development patterns in the surrounding areas to be considered. And again, as a reminder, when the Commissioner, when the Board of Commissioners evaluates the request for approval during their quasi-judicial hearing, they must determine that the following four conditions are met. Again, those are that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and approved; the use meets all required conditions and specifications of the Unified Development Ordinance; the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or the use as a public necessity; and the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan for New Hanover County. And again, just to follow up on my comments at the top of my presentation, the purpose of the preliminary forum is for the board to discuss components of the proposal that are not clear or where additional information is needed to understand the project, provide advice to the applicant on the presentation they will be making to the Board of Commissioners, advice to parties speaking in opposition on what they may want to consider when preparing for the Board of Commissioners' meeting, and advice to both parties on potential issues that could be addressed before the public hearing. This concludes my initial part of the presentation. Abby Lorenzo with the WMPO, and Tim Lowe with County Engineering are present, and the applicant has prepared a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Does anyone on the board have questions for staff?
Robert, would you explain the third building concept you talked about at the very beginning on the first special use permit?
Yes, sir. So the site plan included with the application, let's see if I can get back here to it real So the site plan included with the application shows these initial buildings, one and building two. They have included in their project narrative the possibility of splitting maybe building two, or having three separate buildings out here instead of two. That would not increase the amount of allowed commercial, and it would not increase the amount of allowed uses, or, I'm sorry, units on the site. But if, for some reason, they felt that, if approved, if in the future they felt that there would need to be a split here, maybe a crossroad, and instead of it being two buildings, building one, two, and three, that that could potentially be something staff could approve administratively during the technical review committee process.
Follow-up. What is the total impervious for each section of those, do you know?
I, I don't know offhand, but.
The applicant could probably tell us that, and thank you.
Chair.
Ms. Rawlins.
Thanks, Robert. Just to clarify, I have this right, the base density for the R fifteen is two-point-five?
Yes, ma'am.
Per, okay, and they're proposing to go up to eight, eight-point-three-seven, and the SUP allows up to ten-point-two?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay. I do have a question for traffic, but it can wait for everybody else if they have questions for you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Farrell? Do you want to ask your traffic question?
Okay. So my question is, the distance from the right turn out to the very first light, what's, what is that length, and what are the car lengths for that left turn, that U-turn? It seems pretty close to the, to the right turn.
We do have the traffic engineer for the applicant here. It may be something that they could address either in their presentation or.
Okay.
If there are no other questions for Mr. Farrell, we can move into the applicant's presentation at this time. Hearing done. That's what we'll do. At this time, we'll hear from the applicant and the applicant's presentation. Again, just a reminder that you will be given, the applicant will be provided thirty minutes for both, a combined total of thirty minutes for both SUP applications. There are quite a few folks that are signed up as part of the applicant's team, but I will let the applicant and their representatives determine who and when will speak on this matter.
Mr. Chairman, good evening, members of the board. Good evening. My name is Gary Shippen. I represent the applicant in this case, and while at first glance it may seem like deja vu all over again, given that this board reviewed a proposed project as part of a rezoning in twenty twenty-three and recommended that it be approved, only to have the application after getting feedback from the Board of County Commissioners. Since that time, with the assistance of staff and a really talented group of people that you'll hear from, some of them, and certainly all are available to answer any questions, this applicant has heard what was said before, has significantly reduced the density, has shifted the density away from the residential areas, has provided amenities beyond those that are required, has provided buffers beyond those that have required, that are required, have provided stormwater amenities and facilities that not only deal with the stormwater associated with this site, but the adjoining areas that but for those stormwater enhancements with the construction of single-family residences permitted by right in the R fifteen would never be required. It's now January of twenty twenty-five, and just like in twenty twenty-three, New Hanover County has a shortage of residential housing through all demographic groups, not only the groups that are characterized as workforce, but others who seek residential housing in New Hanover County based upon their socioeconomic standing. There still is more demand than supply, and that's because we've seen a more than thirty-five percent increase in our population since two thousand, and there's no indication that it's going to stop. In contemplation of what we knew in twenty twenty-one was the case, this county adopted a comprehensive land use plan that contemplated the very type of growth that this particular area of New Hanover County, the Porter's Neck Growth Node, has experienced. So to suggest that this project is something very different than what the Comprehensive Land Use Plan contemplated is just not so. Because, for instance, if in accordance with the right of property owner and applicant to petition for a special use permit and get an increased density than what would otherwise be permitted without a special use permit, if the county commissioners had intended that those density be seven, they could have said so. They didn't. They said it was ten. Ours is eight. So this board nor the county commissioners can now deviate from a land use plan that was adopted in twenty twenty-one, that, again, contemplated this very kind of growth. Therefore, in order to ensure that the specifics that the public commanded and demanded, and that one or more members of the Board of County Commissioners commanded and demanded as part of the rezoning process before, we chose to proceed by way of a special use permit. Why? Because we're required to be specific. We're required to provide material and competent evidence in support of all of the four requirements that in a quasi-judicial proceeding, the Board of County Commissioners will have to pass upon. Similarly, we chose this procedure so that no material and competent, evidence that is not material or competent cannot be considered, not as part of a quasi-judicial proceeding. Those who do not have standing, and those who are not experts in the areas that they profess to have concerns about, courts are clear, can't have that kind of evidence used in a quasi-judicial proceeding. We believe that already in the record exist material and. exist material and competent evidence of our compliance with all of the requirements for the issuance of a special use permit, but we'll enhance that further in our showing in the quasi judicial proceeding before the Board of County Commissioners in February. We do believe this is a project that can be approved. We do believe this is a project that should be approved. Because again, even with its approval, we will still have a residential housing shortage in New Hanover County. Couple of points I want to make about some comments in the staff report, and then I'm going to turn it over to some of our talented team members to address some specific issues. First thing I want to talk about is schools. Page 15, 16 of the staff report shows with respect to student generation rates that we actually are generating today in 2024 and '25 less students per residential unit than what was contemplated in 2020 and 2021 by .05. Next. When we look at the schools that are in this particular district, including Porter's Neck Elementary, that according to staff is currently at 117% capacity, when we know when that school opened, it was already over capacity. We know that the Board of Education has debated since then the notion, especially since Blair opened in 2019, of shifting student populations from Porter's Neck Elementary to an under-capacity Blair Elementary. Haven't done that. Similarly, when we look at Laney, Laney has been higher than its over-capacity numbers that staff report presently indicates that it is. Yet, even though that has been the case for years, our Board of Education made a conscious decision to take high school students who otherwise lived in a New Hanover under-capacity high school district and send them to Laney, hundreds, for reasons that they explained at the time. So what is existing with our public schools is no different than what existed in 2021, when the land use plan, comprehensive plan, was updated to permit the very kind of project that this applicant proposes through the special use permit process and through a quasi judicial proceeding. The only other comments that I wanted to make, just to amplify some of those made by staff. I trust that we can't and shouldn't lose sight of the stormwater enhancements that this project will bring that again, if it stays as R-15 and 70 homes by right are constructed on this property, will never be provided because it will not be required. It's required as part of this process, but to build 70 homes, it won't be. Next. Bray's Drive. There was a big concern, and understandably so, by the residents of Porter's Point that traffic would be directed from this project onto Bray's Drive and into Porter's Neck Road. The TIA that was approved, approved the concept of having Bray's Drive an emergency access only. And that is in fact what the applicant contemplates. So we think we have been responsive to the concerns that were expressed back in 2023. We think we have a project that in a quasi judicial proceeding should be approved. But with that, I'm going to let someone who knows more about it than me chat with you now. Allison.
Good evening. My name is Allison Inger-Bretson. I am a landscape architect and land planner with Paramount Engineering. I will not belabor all the things that were already mentioned in the staff report. Mr. Farrell did a great job of explaining everything. What I do plan to do is to speak with you tonight about why we're here before you. What has changed from the last plan you saw one year ago, and what we're here to do, and why we think this plan might be a little bit better than what we brought before you before. So both of our B2 mixed-use and R-15 additional dwelling allowance SUP requests are guided, as Gary mentioned, by New Hanover County's UDO and the Unified Development Ordinance. I'm sorry, and the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Both SUPs have their separate requirements, and we've outlined those in the application materials. Our entire team is here tonight. We can answer many questions about that. But instead, let's go over some of the things that we've changed. After hearing comments and concerns during the conditional rezoning process, we refined our plan. We spent a lot of time going back and forth with how we could pull units away from the surrounding homes on three sides of the R-15 site, and what we could do to pull density towards Market Street, taking things away from, some of the density away from the residential neighborhoods surrounding the property. So we reduced overall density in the entire project by 44 units. We had 348, we now have 304. 62 multifamily that are in the B2 section and 242 townhomes in the R-15. We diversified the housing product. That, that includes 1,800 square feet of commercial that is meant to provide immediate goods and services to people within this neighborhood, as well as people along the Market Street corridor. That's integrated into the multifamily buildings in B2. And Mr. Avery, to answer a question that you asked of staff, I may be able to, to help illuminate this. We do currently have building one and building two as our, our buildings here. We have quite a bit of topography on this site. So we have spent a long time trying to engineer exactly how this site is going to come through. We know what the stormwater is doing, and that affects what the grading is doing. Our civil engineer is here tonight and can talk to you about this more. But one of the things that we may find helpful is separating out that front part of building one, because it's so much higher than some of the other pieces of the site. So that's why we said that we may request three buildings should we, you know, move forward in engineering design and, and it's required. Currently, we are trying to plan with the building one and building two. That B2 area is 9.6% of the total site area. It now houses 20% of the units. That aids us in building, the ability to pull units towards Market Street, and that helps us reduce the number of townhomes that are in the R-15. Overall, we reduced it by 86 units, which is about 25 or 26% of the project in the R-15 density. That area has helped us reduce impervious surface, increase open space, and increase the amenities we're offering. We have also improved existing drainage. Gary spoke some about that, but we've, for those of you that saw the plan last year, that assures we can meet and/or exceed the county's stormwater requirements. We have an existing pond in the north, and that currently is a low point. It's a low point for not only this part, portion of the property, but also for many of the surrounding properties. And now we're providing a defined outlet for that stormwater. SUPs are more restrictive than conditional rezonings. More restrictive in design requirements, more restrictive in the submittal requirements. And they're also more restrictive in the number of professionals it requires to put together the information and to speak with you about it. We feel that all of this allows you more information to thoroughly review the project and gives it a validity and appropriateness evaluation point. This also puts additional information in the public view. One of the critiques we received during the conditional rezoning is that they felt like there was not enough information, whether it be board members or members of the public, that was brought forth that was defined enough. We hope that this process helps that. So in the B2, we have added buildings that we've talked about here. We've integrated those buildings with an entire sidewalk system that we'll talk about in a moment. It connects to the back. We've designed these two projects in, in concert and want everything to work together. One of the nice things about this, this area here in B2 is it has some really fantastic live oaks, and we're building a neighborhood park around those live oaks and creating it as a neighborhood entrance. So as was discussed earlier, we do have a mixed-use building that faces Market Street. It allows us to put commercial along the entire frontage of the, the building area that faces Market Street. We have the other view of the multifamily. Our engineer has prepared detailed plans and can speak with you in more detail here in a few minutes, should you like, for both drainage and utilities. The R-15 portion of the site builds off the plan we had previously shown, the conditional rezoning plan. It is not completely different, but it has changes all throughout. You've seen the architectural concept. We've worked through much of the engineering on the back of the property. Again, our engineer can speak with you about those changes. And as I mentioned, we have an integrated sidewalk system that we've better developed in this plan. It allows us to link all of the amenities that we, we have planned. You'll see some areas highlighted here. These are the larger community amenities, but every block has its own pocket park at every corner. These are all accessible by the integrated trail system and sidewalk system. So with this, we made sure we were paying attention to how long it took for people to access recreation space. We received some comments last time about accessibility, making sure that open space was accessible, usable, and wasn't just a bunch of trees that people couldn't go in and, and throw a ball around. So we spent time figuring out what those amenities are and where they might go. We've designed this so that all of the major amenities are a two to four-minute walk from each unit, or from most of the units, and that the two end pieces, being the commercial and the dog park in the back, are an eight to 10-minute walk from one another. We feel like this promotes a good, walkable, nice neighborhood. And next to that, we have some encumbered utility easements. But as you see here, that's a nice cleared area. So what we can do with that is make some nice multipurpose areas and play areas. We're allowing the existing site to inform design. There is a large portion of this site that is already cleared. So the multifamily areas, the buildings are actually going to be within this cleared area you see here on the screen. The existing trees are going to be integrated into parking islands and those pocket parks that I talked to you about. And the proposed townhomes line up nicely with a lot of the grassed area, existing grassed area in the rear of the site in the R-15 section. And then there are the remaining trees. There's a lot of well-managed property by the existing landowner, and that allows us to provide what we think are going to be some nice nature walk opportunities. Those areas will be incorporated into our widened buffers. The minimum buffer is highlighted here in a dashed line on the screen. And I should point out that most of those buffers are in the rear R-15 portion of the property because we have adjacent single-family residential. The commercial to commercial doesn't have the buffers that we have in the back. So what we have done is take the existing tree line and let that inform where our buffers are and where we build and don't build. So in some cases, we have up to 12 times the, the minimum required open space, and those are mature trees with a good understory. These are some of the examples of those buffers. Now, I've told you a lot about the onsite improvements, but we also have traffic improvements. And with this, I would like to turn it over to our traffic consultant.
Good evening. My name is John Davenport, and the president of John Davenport Engineering. You know, what I'd like to do in our presentation briefly is give you a little bit of historical, what's happened with traffic and kind of catch you up where we are, what's changed. I'll be here to answer your question as well and talk a little bit about the overall benefits. So we'll start, dial back just a little bit. Back in December 2022, our firm did the original traffic study, and we assumed the 348 apartments. And that project was approved by the, this board here in November, and then subsequently, as you know, was withdrawn at the commissioners' meeting about a year ago. Since then, as they've talked about, the apartments have been reduced to 304 units, and we have 1,800 square feet of what we assumed was to be retail space. And basically, as they reported, the staff, this resulted in a negligible change in traffic. So it really wasn't a huge change one way or the other in terms of the overall site generation traffic. The site has been reconfigured to acknowledge the public's concern with exclusive public access to Market Street and emergency-only access to Bray's Drive. Now, that was a point of contention last year, and so we made sure that was taken care of. And we actually resubmitted a, a, a letter clarifying all that with the MPO. That letter was approved in December of 2024, based on the memorandum and all the data that we just spoke about. Now, to talk about the improvements, the developer has agreed to install the improvements listed in the letter. And these improvements exceed what was required by the MPO. There are two improvements on Market Street. As you noted, there's a signalizing the existing left turn, U-turn at Cypress Pond Way. That's roughly 200 feet, 250 feet away from our driveway. And we typically use a 20 feet per vehicle for stacking, so that would give you 10, 11 vehicles that we could stack into that location. Signalizing it was one of the things that NC DOT suggested allows us to be able to clear that queue out so that we don't have a problem with traffic back into Market Street. The other big improvement we're doing is extending the right turn lane that leads from Porter's Neck all the way back southward to the ABC Store. And what the benefit for that is, obviously, it gets traffic into our site easier, but also traffic can queue back from Porter's Neck during the afternoon. So people are able to actually bypass that traffic queue, get up to the light, and make the right turn to go home in the evening. One thing that has also occurred since this study of note, military cutoff road extension was completed in September of 2023, and subsequent traffic studies we've done for other projects have indicated that the traffic on Market Street has dropped significantly. And so we would say at this point that this traffic study, even though we're not proposing to reduce any of the improvements, is inherently conservative. And so to summarize, we will be signalizing the U-turn and the left turn allow more, easier for traffic to be able to get into the food line and extend that right turn as well. So I will be available for any further questions, but I think that summarizes the report for right now.
Ms. Ronhouse, did you have a-
Ms. Roanhouse, did you have a question of the traffic engineer about the length of that turn lane?
He answered it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Wanted to take a minute to introduce you to the other members of the team that have come here. Paul Smith, General Counsel of the Carroll Companies, Craig Carlock, the COO of the Carroll Companies, Dennis Burton, the Director of Land Development, other representatives of Paramount are also here. Again, I trust that we have overstated, which we intended to do, the improvements that will be made by SUPs being issued for this project that would not otherwise be made. Next, I trust that these SUPs that seek an increased density of less than what is permitted by an SUP makes it clear that this is not a project that we are attempting to get the maximum density out of the acreage that is available for development. Next, I trust you understand that with the enhanced buffers, the increased open spaces, the 1.5 miles of interconnected sidewalks, and this particular type of housing style, that this indeed is a very unique project that, thanks to the planning staff, is the subject of meticulous work, I think, on everyone's part. We're happy to answer any questions that you or anyone else may have, but otherwise, we thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Shipman. There is about two minutes and fifty seconds left with the applicant's presentation as far as the thirty minutes that were allotted there. We can, if there's any questions for the applicant, we can try to use that time, or we can just move into the forty minutes for public question and comments and go through the opposition. Why don't we go ahead and just jump right into the public question and comments section at this time? I'm going to go down my list of folks who have signed up to speak in opposition or who may have questions. At this time, I'm just going to go straight down the list in order as you've signed up. And I apologize ahead of time if I can't, for whatever reason, read the writing or I mispronounce your name, just make sure you correct me. I would again remind you, when you do come up to the podium, to make sure that you're speaking clearly and into the microphone so that not only everyone here can hear you and understand you, but also those folks who are watching and listening at home. Make sure that you do state your name and your address for the record as well. First up on the list, we have a Mr. Kevin Foley.
Thank you very much. My name is Kevin Foley. I live at seven nine one three Bonaventure Drive, two eight four one one. And hey, there I am up there. I want to thank everyone. There's been a lot of great points mentioned. This is a lot better than last year, and I do appreciate that. I want to thank my neighbors, a lot of the same people from last year for showing up and enjoying our little Porter's Neck node that we have. I'm going to try to keep this as quick as I can, but I think there's a lot of things that need to be worked on that I want to kind of bring up here. Obviously, we've got four points that you guys need to look at, y'all need to look at in order to approve this. The first thing being the public health and safety. Now, in the application, the first thing mentioned is the traffic study, and right off the bat, I want to take some issues up with the traffic study as a whole. If you read through this, one of the first things that caught my eye is somehow in the PM, we're getting actually less traffic. And my first question was, how are we getting three hundred new units, and we're going to have less traffic because of that? And maybe there's a good answer to that, but drilling into the data a little bit, some background, I work as a database administrator. I do a lot of data analysis for work, so I kind of like diving into the raw data on this. And my first question, first issue here is with data quality. So the data that we're working with off this traffic analysis, the volume data was taken in September of twenty twenty-two. If you've been and if you've driven on that road since then, you know there's a lot of changes. They mentioned the military cutoff extension has opened. I'll get back to that in a second. But even since, in the past year, we have since gotten rid of the center turn lanes in favor of medians, much safer choice. We got rid of the suicide lanes, which is great. However, it means we're going to be taking a lot more U-turns, which slows down traffic and in many cases can make us have twice as long of a trip, not just coming in and out of this property. Everybody in there who's going to someplace on the other side of the road is going to have to go farther than they need, do a U-turn, and go back. Doing a U-turn in a left lane just takes longer, slows down the left lane as well. So right off the bat, I'd like to say that I think we did a newer traffic study. I did note that in the traffic study, there's a TIA memorandum which appears to be admitting that the traffic data is outdated. And they, from what I can tell, they seem to have gotten, tried to explain that by adding another traffic study, this one from Market and Wendover, which is two miles down the road. This study was, this is the study that seems to be saying that military cutoff extension has helped a lot. When Mr. Davenport mentioned that, I heard a lot of my neighbors chuckle because if you travel, this really didn't change much for anyone, and maybe the medians, it's kind of even things out for us. But the big difference here is that their, the study that they're using at Market and Wendover, it took volume data, traffic volume data on two different dates. The first was September first of two thousand and three and then December twelfth, two thousand and three. The first was Labor Day weekend, tourist traffic and school traffic. The second is a Tuesday in December. Clearly, those are going to have, you're going to see a drop in traffic off of that, and you can't attribute all of that to military cutoff opening. In addition, the traffic study at Wendover is, it's a completely different neighborhood. Wendover isn't, this wouldn't be the only entrance and exit out of this neighborhood. They've got two other exits that go into the Ogden neighborhood. They go to Ogden Elementary School. They can get all the way over to military cutoff from there. So there's no, not a necessity for everyone in that neighborhood to come and go from that one entrance. They also have a turn lane there. This entrance wouldn't, this development wouldn't have a turn lane. There is a median, which means everyone coming and going is doing a U-turn at some point, which essentially doubles the amount of, could double the amount of distance traveled for each of them. So there's just enough changes here that seems that they need to, that we need to do an updated traffic study for this. Mr. Ship even mentioned the growth that we've seen, thirty-five percent growth in Wilmington. And from the data that I could try to find in just the past two years since this traffic type, more than two years, about fifteen thousand people have moved to Wilmington. And so that alone could necessitate this. We know a lot of it has been in Porter's Neck. We've seen Porter's Neck as the number-one area for growth in a lot of different studies. And not to mention, I can't even leave off that we now, in this, this year, we're looking at this with a retail factor as well. There's more people coming in and out of this, people who aren't residents, so that needs to be factored in as well. And I, from what I found, I couldn't find that in the traffic study. So I would love to see a new traffic study taken on this to take all of those factors into account. If it was one, I think we could, one factor, I think we'd change it, but that's a lot. So moving on, I think you can all see my shirt up on the screen here. I spoke last year in regards to the school overcrowding. It's a big issue. That isn't the issue of the developers here. This is an issue for, honestly, the county commissioners who are pressing on that issue as well. Porter's Neck Elementary, they had quoted a hundred fourteen percent overcapacity. That number is after they've put in four portable classrooms this past year because they're overcapacity. I spoke with Principal Paul Slovic there, and he's planning on asking for two more portable units for next year as well because they're still overcapacity as they are, and that would be the extent of what they would be allowed to have on that lot. So anything after that, they just might not have desks for students, so they might not have a classroom for them, which is a weird place to be. Last year, there was a school utilization study done by, commissioned by the school board, and they were saying that they found that Porter's Neck Elementary in the, in two thousand and twenty-seven school year will be around a hundred forty-four percent capacity. So the one fourteen that we were quoting earlier is really a lowball of what we're looking at. A hundred forty-four by the time this is probably built and actually people are moving into it is what we can be looking at. So if this was to get approved, we are going to need to start building a school somewhere around here immediately. So that may not be something that we can deny this based off of, but that's going to be the next thing that is going to come up, or there's going to be issues with the residents in the schools in the area as well. I won't get too much into the numbers on this. I feel like a lot of that hasn't changed, but I feel like this is, I will point out that I think that this applies specifically to a number of points on the approval factors here. It's pretty easy to say that on the fourth, the fourth factor, is this in harmony with the neighborhoods? And I don't think that schools that are overcrowded would be considered in harmony. That's a very vague term, so I think it's hard to prove any of that with factual evidence. And as a data guy, I kind of didn't want to bring that up, but there's part of it. But I think you can also make a pretty good argument to say that all of the homes in the school district could potentially suffer a loss because of this. Ask any Realtor, if any of you guys have ever bought a home, one of the things people look for is great schools. And if people are looking to come and move to this area and the schools are overcrowded, if they might not have a desk for your kid, you're not going to want to buy a home there, and that takes a lot of people out of the home-buying experience. So there are a lot of potential, people could be walking around, going to a different neighborhood, and it could lower home values for everybody. So that is a material, a material thing that we could see happen. So I think that's all that I have for now, unless anybody has any questions for me. I'll let someone else from the Porter's Neck growth node speak. Excellent. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. If everyone could hold their applause after each speaker, just so we can move through and make sure we have enough time. We do have seven folks. We do want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to be heard. Courtney Coraher.
You are close. My name is Courtney Coraher. Very close. I am the Marsh Oaks HOA president, and I'll be speaking tonight on behalf of the board. The board is unanimous in our opposition to this development. I spoke last year as well, and I'm very familiar with this project and the limited changes that have been made. Roadworks Projects and Exponential Development approvals in Porter's Neck have not prioritized pedestrian access. Our area lacks public transits, crosswalks, continuous sidewalk networks, and bike paths. The lack of pedestrian connectivity to the area outside of this proposal remains an issue. Market Street traffic persists, well above planning capacity for number of vehicles per day. This development creates additional challenges, and according to their own outdated TIA report, this will add thousands of daily trips alone. We have yet to receive a current TIA report, taking into account commercial and apartment use. This design is asking patrons and residents to jump three lanes of traffic to U-turn south on Market Street or be forced to use the already congested Porter's Neck road intersection. Residents traveling south on Market Street will need to use the exceedingly short U-turn lane at Hazen Market Street to return to their community. The developer is still not addressing this issue in their Roadworks plan. The large influx of commercial use and residents will negatively impact traffic flow at these two intersections along Market Street. Overflow from both retention ponds are proposed to release into the creek that is abutting Marsh Oaks properties. This creek currently, along with the existing pond, are already known to flood regularly just with heavy rain alone. I personally abut these properties, and I have seen the creek rise exceeding five feet just during a heavy rain. Overflow from retention ponds and commercial areas on Market Street divert into marsh creeks, exacerbating this issue that go into Marsh Oaks. Water management and swell maintenance for Marsh Oaks HOA already exceeds thirty-five thousand dollars annually. This excess water will create further financial and environmental burden on Marsh Oaks residents and surrounding neighborhoods. Environmental impacts and stormwater outfall are unmitigated concerns the community has with this project. The developer has not shown enough data to ensure that this will not add to growing environmental and safety concerns for direct runoff into the surrounding neighborhoods. The developer has not made any of the units available for affordable housing. Once again, the developer refuses to decide whether these townhomes will be for rent or sale. However, the design is still indicative of rental units. The site map clearly identifies the clubhouse building as property management office. The addition of apartment units solidifies the developer's intent. Porter's Neck lacks homes for sale, while numerous rental projects have received approval in twenty twenty-four. As such, renters create a challenge for education enrollment planning. This project does not prioritize suitable housing density, environmental sustainability, safe traffic flow, or education capacity. Because of these concerns and repeated attempts of the developer to push forward this project and now circumventing input in an open forum, the Marsh Oaks residents have obtained legal representation. We hope you consider these factors in the recommendations that you make to the commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian McKenzie.
Can people here hear me because I talk very softly?
Yes.
I don't really have a lot more to add than Kevin and Courtney have already said. I'm not an expert in anything. I live at, in Porter's Crossing, which is the development just east of this. My notes are, have already, basically been already expressed by Kevin and Courtney, but being just a typical resident, I have to rely on the information that is provided as part of the application. Like the whole, our whole community, we have concerns about the traffic. The part of the documentation, like the R fifteen is the townhomes, two hundred and fifty-two apartments, and they're showing only a hundred and, what is it, a hundred and something trips out of that. Realistically, like on our street alone, almost every house has two cars. So you've got townhomes, you're going to have two cars. So the, a lot of the information to me is not realistic. The overcrowding of the schools, Porter's Neck Elementary is at a hundred and fourteen percent, Laney High is at a hundred and seventeen percent. The posture taken by the developer's representative, well, that's the Board of Education's problem. Let them deal with it. The thing is, developers need to not exacerbate that kind of problem. They can't, there is a solution, and that is to build single-family homes in this vacant area. That's what the original, that's what the original intention was. And what isn't obvious from the paperwork and all the numbers and so on is, like Courtney mentioned, the ambiance and Kevin mentioned, the ambiance in Porter's Neck is primarily single-family, and there's a different ambiance, and you can't put that into black and white. But if you live in that kind of single-family home area, you understand it. One of the documents in the, in the application shows that between twenty-two and thirty-two, twenty twenty-two and twenty thirty-two, there's going to be a need for an extra twelve percent of apartments and townhomes. That's understandable, but the same document shows is a thirty percent need increase in the need for single-family homes. So why not take that thirty acres and develop sixty to seventy-five single-family homes? You'll get more green space through the, through the backyards, and that's one of the Board of Commissioners' goals for twenty twenty-five, is to increase green space and the public safety, which is the roads. Well, part of it is the roads. Anyway, we're not opposed to development. We just think single-family homes would be a better development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have a Michelle Morgan.
Good evening. My name's Michelle Morgan, and I live at eighty-two thirty-four Porter's Crossing Way. My neighbors did speak the concerns on my heart this evening that I wanted to bring forward, but I just wanted to go ahead and add that traffic, again, is, the setup is not safe. It's so close, the market and Porter's Crossing Way intersection is very close to where the traffic will be entering and exiting. with this development at 304 units. So that's safety and traffic, that's one of my main concerns. And the other one is that I, too, think this space is best used for single-family housing. Just north of Porter's Crossing Road, there are plenty of apartments going up there in Hampstead, not too far north of this location. And so we do need more affordable starter homes, and this area would be perfect for something like that. Thank you.
Caroline Van Angen.
You're actually one of the few that got that right.
Thank you.
Caroline Van Angen, I live at 8317 Vintage Club Circle in the plantation at the end of Porter's Neck Road. I've only been here for a year and a half. One of the reasons I left Connecticut, Fairfield County specifically, was traffic and safety. In the last year and a half, I've seen a lot of development for our, you know, housing. And when I listen to, like, the shortage of housing and you see these huge developments just down Market Street, not in Hampstead, that's also in Hampstead, but on Market Street, just a little further south, those, there's room, they're going to be developing it most likely in the front of the multi-properies that are for rent or for sale right now. So I don't know whether the studies of, and the statistics provided of the shortage of housing takes into consideration all the existing developments that are there. The road to get to Hampstead, to, to all those people that live there at three to six, you cannot get into the right-hand lane on Market Street. That is already a problem. So having this many people, two cars, maybe multi-children, you're going to have way too much traffic. That is a huge concern. I think that safety is a huge problem, having, what, I can't remember exactly how many feet it is when you make a right out of, right near the ABC store. You can barely get out of there, first of all, because of the traffic that's on, ongoing on Market Street. So to say that people are going to be able to get to the left lane and make a U-turn, let alone a bus, right, doing that, carrying children, there's not enough room so that lane, the left lane and the right lane will potentially be stopped. So it's, it's unfortunate that, you know, we, as a community here in Porter's Neck, have to suffer or give up what we have for something like this that, to me, isn't necessary. It's too big for the space. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. William Northrup.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is William Northrup. I live at 388 Shackleford Drive. And as a point of reference, our front porch looks right out onto the pickleball courts. So if you're trying to find my house on the map. And I wanted to come and voice my objection to what is going on, my opposition to it. Some of it, when I, when I first saw the map, we got this in the mail, it just reminded me of the very type of goofy development that drives people crazy. This, I'm like, this looks like a gerrymandered congressional district. That everyone looks at those maps and like, who makes these things up? I mean, because it's so obvious this thing is jury-rigged, where you've got a commercial property here, and you've got a, and you've got this little sliver in there. It's like, this is, this is the type of development that just drives people crazy, that these things get approved, to be quite honest with you. Because this obviously is like cobbled together. It, it doesn't make any sense, which is why we're here. Now as to the applicant, of course, they withdrew their last application, and we all know why. Because they didn't have the votes, and they didn't want to get a no vote. That's pretty obvious. And so now they're back, and with a new and improved plan. And part of it, I'm just looking at my notes here. You know, it's interesting from the, from the applicant saying, the first plan, particularly, and I'm particularly concerned about the back unit, the residential unit, because that's most impacted the, I think the commercial unit is less of an objection, but the, the back unit, where you're cramming 200 and some odd, 240 old townhomes, all circle around single-family homes, is just very problematic. And, you know, the applicant came in and said, well, our original proposal only asked for 450% greater than the zoning allowed. Now we're cutting it down to 335%, 8.73 units, and down from, up from 2.5, you know, 2.5 is what's allowed. It's just nuts. You're looking like 8.73 and a 2.5, I mean, and this is going to be approved? It just seems excessive, and it doesn't fit with the nature of the residential houses. There's three different developments that, that circle this property. We have different competing interests as to why we object to it, but we all object to it, as evidenced by the people that are here. And, and finally, I'll just say two last things. One, the, I look at property values, and when I look at development like this, I always, I say, I've been around a long time, owned a lot of houses, lived in a lot of different places. I would say, is this going to increase my property value, decrease my property value, or is my property value going to be neutral? I don't see any scenario that increases my property value here and my neighbors. I see a lot that decreases, maybe neutral, depending on how, there's a couple of years of huge disruption. This is a big project, and it's going to take a while. There's going to be a lot of earth-moving equipment, a lot of dust, a lot of noise. That's all going to kind of feed into all of our neighborhoods. And that's just during the construction period. Once it gets built, my concern is, I live right off of Braze Drive. Braze Drive is a, is a, it's a private street, it's owned by the HOA. It's not a public street. We realize there's an easement through there. And it's supposed to be an emergency access. That's the original plan, that is not, I believe there's two options or two proposals. Option A or Proposal A, Proposal B. Proposal A has that emergency exit being used as a public street, not just for emergency vehicles. And what I envision is once the development gets done and built, and you have 300 townhomes and 300 townhome owners, and you've got a big HOA now there, they're going to start agitating for opening up that emergency exit. Because I think, as many people have mentioned here, the traffic on, when you look at this, you're like, how does this traffic go onto Market Street? How do they go south into Wilmington from the, you know, a lot of, we're all kind of shaking our heads here. And I just think soon as the developers get done with it, and the homeowners own the place, and they've got a big HOA, and they've got money coming in for the HA, they're going to start agitating, opening up that exit. Because it's there. It's just so easy, just, there's going to be a gate there or something, remove the gate. That would absolutely destroy our neighborhood. I mean, there's like 50 homes in our, our community, and having 300 homes come in and out of there. So I would ask your consideration of that, and the objections that you have heard here in regards to how the neighbors feel about that, particularly the back property, the residential property, that that's just entirely inconsistent with the neighborhoods that are surrounding it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a Sandra Vitals or Vittles.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Vittles, so close enough for government work. And I appreciate not being called Vittles, which is a common, common mispronunciation. I live at 8208 Bald Eagle Lane, and my family has lived there since it was called Route 1, Box 629 East. So I have seen all the changes that have occurred, some for the good, some not quite as constructive. I'm also here to represent the Porter's Neck Homeowners Association. My friend and neighbor, Steve Hamburger, could not make it tonight. And also, I'm speaking on behalf of the Porter's Neck Quality of Life Association, or as we like to think of ourselves, the free people of Futch Creek Road and Bald Eagle Lane, and also some interested parties at Forest Sound. As you may recall, last year, when Carroll Company submitted the rezoning request to the Board of Commissioners, literally almost a year ago, and it looked as if it was about to be voted down by the Commissions, they withdrew it. At the time, our main concern was the high density of the proposed townhouse development, which is inconsistent with those neighborhoods and the R-15 use. In addition, we were concerned that the traffic studies were based on flawed data and didn't take into account many of the other apartment houses that have now since been completed and have capacity, and have brought additional residents and traffic to our neighborhood. This area of Market Street and Porter's Neck Road has been rated F by the Department of Transportation, and it's unlikely that even with the reduced density for this townhouse, that would help mitigate that. In addition, we have concerns and retain concerns that the local schools, particularly Porter's Neck Elementary, can't support the students that are coming in. And to kind of say, well, all of our schools have been overcapacity for a while, I don't think is quite the answer to that. And then finally, while we appreciate seeing more green buffer zones and additional storm ponds, this is part of the water shed that flows into Pages Creek and Little Creek. As we know, Pages Creek is contaminated, and there's a very forthright effort being put in place to try and solve that water quality issue, but we as taxpayers are willing and are paying for that. Very recently, Little Creek, which is the tidal creek between the Avondale Neighborhood, that's the one that goes out of Edgewater and connects up to the Figure Eight Bridge, and is adjacent to the Eagle Point Golf Course in the south end of Bald Eagle Lane, that got closed to shell fishing, again, because of water quality contamination. And taken as a whole, while we appreciate some of the reduction in density, it's still not consistent with this neighborhood. The traffic impact studies are being based on flawed data. If you look at the application that was resubmitted on December 18th, it's still using the December 2022 numbers. There isn't really a good answer to the concerns we have about our schools not having capacity to meet these additional incoming students. And potentially, this in no way, shape, or form helps with the existing water quality problems we have with our tidal creeks and sheds. Finally, I'd like to, just as a closing point, say, if the concerns that led to almost 300 folks showing up here last year from these neighborhoods were addressed, why not do it as a rezoning application again, rather than going through this far more restrictive application for a special use permit, which really limits the standing and public input? I think that's something we're thinking about. And then finally, yes, this county needs more affordable housing, which is defined as, I'm sure you folks know better than I, 60% of the average median income of New Hanover County or workforce, 80 to 120%. Nothing in this development plan meets those legal definitions. And I know for a fact, for example, with Abbey Lane, those developers have taken into account to address this need that we definitely have here in New Hanover County. So for all of these reasons, I realize you as a body are not voting or making a recommendation, but I hope that you hear our continued concerns around, around this being a too-high-density development that's not consistent with the neighborhood that it's in, and with impact studies that are based on deeply flawed data. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. At this time, we've concluded the list that I have of people who have signed up to speak in opposition. Is there anyone else who did not have an opportunity to sign up, maybe came in late, but who would like to be heard tonight? All right, seeing no one here, I do want to give the applicant an opportunity to respond to the comments that were made in opposition. There is about 10 minutes and 30 seconds left on the clock, Mr. Shipman, just give you that. I will also just ask you to just be pointed as to your responses as this is a preliminary forum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I shall. First, a reason that the process was chosen for a special use permit is to provide more, not less, certainty. Next, I want to thank every member of the public that has engaged in their right to participate in a public forum, but with a reminder that when we are in a quasi-judicial proceeding in February, most of the people that you heard from tonight will not be permitted to give an opinion because they're not traffic engineers, they're not stormwater engineers. We have those. Next, throw rocks, if we will, at the traffic study, but when this board or the Board of County Commissioners does so, it's like the old adage, when you're pointing a finger at someone, you're pointing one right back at yourself because the WMPO has approved this traffic study. If anyone on this board, much less in this audience, has gone through the process of attempting to get WMPO to approve a traffic study, you know it's not just some fly-by-night organization that bases their approvals on numbers that are phony. And we heard that tonight, the numbers are phony. Ladies and gentlemen, that can't happen. It cannot happen. Next, stormwater. Keep in mind, as certainly this board well understands, that this project will be required to obtain a state stormwater permit. If anyone has had, on this board, much less in the audience, experience with DEQ and the Water Quality Division that specifically has jurisdiction over this site, then you must have a great degree of confidence that within the parameters of the law, the stormwater issues for this site and the adjoining sites will be taken care of. The notion that the, oh, the stormwater ponds can overflow, sure, in a thousand-year storm event, like what we've just had, they're going to. But that doesn't happen. DEQ does not permit a stormwater system to be constructed and then it not serve the functions that, that is designed to function. Next, schools. Staff has concluded that the proposed impact from this project to the public schools, the three elementary school, middle school, high school, are quote-unquote minimal. Not substantial. A statement was made, oh, if this project is approved, we got to build another school. No, we don't. Not for this project. We don't have to build another school. Because for Porter's Neck Elementary, the projected impact is 18 students over what would otherwise be permitted if you built 70 households in there. For the middle school, plus nine. For Laney High School, plus 16. Laney High School over four grades. Porter's Neck Elementary over K through 5. Middle School over 6 through 8. That's the reason the staff concluded that this project will have a minimal impact on schools in the surrounding area. And again, just a reminder, the student generation rate that the comprehensive plan contemplated in 2020 and 2021 is less in 2024 and 2025 than what was contemplated. The, why not single-family? Look, if... Look, if the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners, when they adopted their comprehensive land use plan in 2021, did not wish to have a variety of housing styles, which is what it says, they could have said it. Meaning, if they wanted more single-family than multifamily, they could have said it. That's not what they said at all. What it says is that this community needs a variety of housing styles. The report from January of 2024, specific to New Hanover County, made clear that it's not just affordable housing where we lack residential housing, it is all socioeconomic The notion that there is a decrease in value of adjoining single-family residential neighborhoods that join what looks like a multifamily is blighted by the data. So again, that's the reason that we chose to use this process so that we can base our presentation on material, substantial, and competent evidence from the experts who are here to answer any questions, and quite frankly, if the public wishes to pose any questions, we're open between now and February to have anyone in the public who's got questions that they wish to have us address, we'll address them. But other than that, again, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have heard from the applicant. We have also heard from speakers in opposition, their comments and questions. It is now time for the planning board to weigh in on this matter as part of the preliminary forum. The planning board will and may address any comments or any questions that they have for the applicant, for members of the opposition, and may also direct any comments that they have towards both parties as they prepare for the commissioners' hearing to determine whether or not this application would be approved or denied. At this time, I do see hands, but I do want to keep this moving, and everyone has had an opportunity to talk, and as much as I'd like to stay here all night and discuss this matter, I do need to keep it moving as best as possible.
Four minutes left.
If you'd like your four minutes, you may have your four minutes, but I do, I do want to state, please try and speak to something that we haven't already heard, if possible. Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to seek a clarification from what we just heard. It was my understanding that a letter went out to residents within 500 feet of this property and that they will have standing at the hearing and that their opinion does matter, that whether they're an expert or not, they will be heard by the commissioners and that will be taken into consideration. Is that correct, or did I, am I incorrect on that?
So, I'll defer to legal counsel here. I think there, this is part of the discussion over the special use permit process?
Yeah, the standing question is distinct and different from whether an expert testimony is required. So you can have standing and you could address issues that did not require expert testimony, but if they are ones that would, which such as details about stormwater, values of real estate, and traffic, those would be addressed by experts.
I see. Okay. I did want to make one clarification while I'm up here, too. Porter's Neck Elementary did not receive their modular units, as it was stated earlier. They have two, and the site is a max of four. I just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page.
Yeah, if you don't mind just stating your name for the record, I forgot to ask you that, and I do want to make sure we have that, please, sorry.
Christine Mason.
Thank you.
Kevin Foley, again, 7913 Bonner Venture Drive. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of quick things. We heard, it mentioned that the WMPO did approve this traffic impact analysis, and it's very hard to get things through them. I would like to also point out, it's very hard to get things through this board at times. You guys have a very high bar, I think, and people go through a very arduous process to go through this. However, when this went through last year and then went to the commissioners, we did have a member of this board stand up before the commissioners and say that they regretted approving this. So just because someone has approved something does not make it completely infallible and doesn't go, and it can still have flaws that should be looked at. Now, I never say data was phony. I did say that the data was outdated and that can cause some issues with it as well. That's from my expert testimony as a data analyst, my trade. I would also like to point out that it was stated that there was, would only bring 18 students to Porter's Neck Elementary School. I believe we're using the .09 student generation rate, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's what we're using. 304 units that brings us to 27 students and not 18, and that is, that's just math. I showed my work on that. So, that's all I wanted to add. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Courtney Corrigan, representing the Marsh Oaks HOA. Would like to point out, the legal counsel of the developer has said that they want this to present more information. However, through them choosing to use a special use permit, it has allowed for residents to have less information. Because residents only within 500 feet were sent a letter, all those other residents who are outside of that had to find out about this permitting process through the Marsh Oaks HOA board and word of mouth, which has limited information spread within Porter's Neck. I would also like to add that this type of permitting was also selected partially due to burden legal precedence for residents. Now we are having to spend money to have that legal representation that otherwise we would not have to have in a normal rezoning or otherwise different type of permitting process. I would like to add that several of us, although maybe not stated, do have professional experience and expertise. I myself have been within real estate and investment development for over a decade. Along with that, Marsh Oaks does staff water experts along with stormwater drainage, who on a weekly and monthly basis are attending to the stormwater areas in question where the water will be flowing to. So along with that, although their legal counsel makes certain points, I do feel like a lot of things that they may be saying are not actually factual to the day-to-day data that we who live there are experiencing. So, thank you so much.
There's 30 seconds left, so if anyone wants to use it. Okay. At this point, we'll move on to the board discussion. I do appreciate everyone's comments. I do appreciate everyone's involvement and willingness to speak during this preliminary forum. The board at this time, it's up, it's open to you for any questions and comments that you have, whether that's questions for the applicant, opposition, feedback as to preparation for the formal hearing before the commissioners to either or both parties. It's up to you.
Mr. Chair, I just had a few comments. I think it was Ms. Courier, or Corvair said it properly. This process does require the public to provide more detailed information. As the applicant has mentioned, they have a higher standard of detail that they have to provide, but the public also has to do that. So, the points and the concerns raised are, seem to be very valid, but I encourage you to get the expertise behind that as part of your, as part of your effort. To the applicant's application, there was a comment very early on about how the comprehensive plan anticipated this type of development. I don't fully see that. The B2, maybe, because I think that was listed under general business. That seems to be reasonable, but the area behind it was for general residential, and general residential in the comprehensive plan did not anticipate this type of development because, and it's evidenced because part of the special use is to increase the density allowed in that R-15. So, I have, I have some concerns. The suggestions seem to be made that the comprehensive plan, this is what the comprehensive plan anticipated, and I don't think that's really the case from, from, from when that was created in 2016. One other comment I will say, and I appreciate the, the, the comment from Mr. Foley, I didn't appreciate the, the term "phony." I don't believe anybody mentioned that the information was phony. I believe that there was questions about it. So, I encourage that in the future, that, that we be more factual about our comments to everybody involved in the process. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hip. All right, Mr. Moore.
So my first couple of questions are gonna be actually for staff, and I guess from a, Robert, I'll let you kind of come up. So the comprehensive plan also showed this area, and kind of going with Mr. Hip's thought process, as a growth node. Can you explain very quickly somewhat of the definition of why that was indicated as a growth node, and essentially, what is a growth node?
So the why it was designated as a growth node is, I wonder if we could get a map back up from one of my presentations. But if you look at the Porter's Neck area, you have some pretty major intersections. You have the entirety of Porter's Neck. You also have Market Street, and then, get to a map here. But they typically align with some of our major intersections. You'd think of a place like Monkey Junction as a growth node, and you can see them here, then in this area in Blue Clay. And so the intention, the intention is to acknowledge what is happening out there, which is an area where we anticipate seeing future growth, probably a little higher than some of the other areas outside of that growth node, further along corridors.
Okay. So for the applicant, I would probably highlight the emphasis behind the growth node a little bit clearer and a little bit more concise. That would be my one thought for y'all. You have two averging faults as far as the growth node in this area. Obviously, we have a 2016 comprehensive plan that's already going through an update, and I'm not gonna put you on the spot because it's technically not updated, but I'm gonna imagine that growth node more than likely will probably stay as a growth node for the Porter's Neck area. Again, I'm not gonna put you on the spot on that one, but for the main part, I think, really starting to talk about the growth node and defining that and why that was indicated. My next question would be, what is the definition of a dwelling unit? Because everything that we have in this SGP process and this application talks about dwelling unit. And I realize that the applicant has mixed, mentioned in the comprehensive plan in this area, a mixture of housing types, so I understand what that is, but what is a definition of a dwelling unit? Because there's been some, there's some challenges with, are these houses for sale or for rent? But the ordinance does not dictate any type of whether this house, whether houses are for sale or for rent. So a dwelling unit, how do y'all define that?
So I can go and get the actual ordinance definition of that, that would be helpful.
That, we'll come back to that, that's fine. And then, uses allowed in the B2? I'm sorry, Robert. And so for the applicant, I already kind of generally know what dwelling unit definition's gonna be. I would probably, while you talk about mixture of housing types, I would also talk about what a dwelling unit is as well.
And for that definition, the ordinance defines a dwelling unit as a single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including a permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. So one, a one-bedroom apartment is a dwelling unit, a seven-bedroom home is a dwelling unit, it's a unit of.
Gotcha. So it does not dictate between rental or homeownership?
Correct.
Gotcha, okay. My next question would be, typically, what the uses are allowed in the B2? Since this is not a conditional rezoning, typically on conditions, we see the fact that uses are conditioned. Here, my understanding from our general review is that the uses allowed are all the uses that are permitted by right in B2, correct?
The uses allowed as part of these special use permit on the B2 section, that is actually limited to.
To B1?
To the uses allowed in the B1, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Can you give me maybe example, a couple of examples of what that would maybe be?
Sure. I've got our table of uses here, and I'll run down a few examples. And get to our commercial section real quick. So some B1 uses could include uses such as a animal shelter, lodges, fraternal and social organizations, religious assemblies. I'll get more into the actual.
It's the lowest commercial use the county has, correct? Lowest intensity commercial use?
It is one of the lower, yes, sir.
Okay. So for the applicant, I would probably acknowledge that as well. Generally, what is some of those uses that are allowed in that B1 district? This is probably a question for our stormwater engineer. So, can you talk a little bit about the overall basin of Porter's Neck? Obviously, we drain into Pages Creek, Little Creek, and some others little sections there. Can you talk a little bit about that? And when you talk about that, are there any challenges that you see from a, not so much an environmental side on the watershed? I know Pages Creek has a water quality program that the county currently works on and has been involved for many, many years, but more or less talking about pinch points. Are there any kind of issues and challenges with any pinch points? And then also, if you could also really quick, talk about what stormwater criteria this project would have to be approved under? Sorry to have to give you so much, and I'm happy to.
Yeah, I'll try to answer that the best I can. There's maybe a lot there, and maybe it'll drive up some more questions for you. Relation to pinch points, kind of where this sits on the watershed, there's no downstream culverts of this. You're kind of getting into the tidal creek downstream. There's no road crossings or anything like that, that would, that would neck that down. You know, most of those pinch points are gonna be upstream, kind of towards Market Street, in that area. As far as requirements, you know, it's gonna have to get a county stormwater permit. That's required to be 25-year storm event, pre- and post, so they gotta look at what's there before development, what's there after, they gotta match it, can't exceed it.
So I'm gonna stop you real quick there. So for the applicant, I think you need to highlight that of what the stormwater requirements are, the pre- and post.
I think, I think it is, you know, a difference here of R-15 versus what's being proposed. You know, what we're seeing on R-15 development is typically in this impervious range, so to use it, you know, the idea of increased density doesn't necessarily always mean increased impervious. This seems to align with what would be going there as far as R-15 would be, based on what we typically see around New Hanover County. I would, and, you know, you've mentioned the restoration plan that our Stormwater Conservation District has been working on. It does have a table of mitigative efforts in there related to water quality. There, there may be some opportunities here. There's a lot of green space on that site to head some of that off, but it wouldn't necessarily be a requirement. I have to defer to planning staff or legal, and I don't think the restoration plan carries that kind of.
Sure.
That kind of weight.
Sure.
But, but there's some, it appears that the site has opportunity for.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you. That's all I had. My next question, and I think would be my last question, would probably be a guess, maybe for Rebecca Yu and probably the NPO. So I understand that the traffic improvements along this go all the way from, as far as the turn lane, go all the way from the ABC, will come into this site up to the ABC and then continue with the existing, what is in front of the ABCs, to all the way up to the intersection where Porter's Neck Road comes in. Are there improvements within the scope of that project out there? Because it's been a construction site for the last, seems like 10 years up there. Are there improvements for any type of sidewalks or multi-use path within the scope of what DOT is doing? Do we know that? Because I- Because I do know that I'm already starting to, there is multi-use path and sidewalks, what have you, within the scope coming back down further south. But I'm not sure where it stops.
So, if I recall correctly, and Abby, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, there is sidewalk, um, planned as part of the project that goes as far as the Walmart entrance on the other side of the road from this property.
Okay, so for the applicant, one of the things, and this was very early on, we didn't need to bring up the presentation, but it talks about pedestrian access. I think one of the challenges we always hear at the planning board is traffic, 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 traffic. I would highly encourage you to take a look at the exterior portion of there. And if there's an opportunity, when you're working with DOT, to put some type of sidewalk or some type of pedestrian element on the exterior side. It doesn't, in my opinion, make a whole lot of sense to do all the sidewalks inside the development, but then you go to the outside of it. That's the biggest challenge we face in New Hanover County. If we want to make some great, a great community, we've got to have some connections. And yes, I understand there's a cost to that, um, but just food for thought. And then, the Braves Drive, um, there was a comment, and this actually came up at the last time we dealt with this. That road is actually a publicly dedicated road unless somebody corrects me. But I believe we went back and forth on this. It's a publicly dedicated road, but it's never been accepted by DOT. Is that a correct statement? Because I know that, I heard that it was a private road and we went back and forth last time on this.
That is correct.
Okay, so with that, it has been, whenever Porter's Point was developed, it was dedicated and built and as a publicly, public road with a public dedication on the final plat, but never been accepted. Obviously, I realize the HOA, I think, is spending the money out there to maintain the road. I certainly understand that. The heartburn I have is that emergency access. I see both sides of it. The one thing that we struggle with within this county is connection, um, and proper planning. And so, I guess from a traffic study, Mr. Davenport, I would probably ask you this. If you were to, if, in the original TIA for the conditional use rezoning that we did last year, that was not approved, did that include in that TA a analysis of that being for emergency service only or for actually being full access? I can't remember. You had both? Okay. Can you come up, please, real quick, if you don't mind? As a full access, can you recall, does that change? And if you can't tonight, I think this is maybe something that the applicant may want to bring up and address. Does it change? Because if you come out of Porter's Point onto Porter's Neck Road, you're basically going to take a right. It takes you essentially to nowhere, or you're going to take a left to go to the light. Does it change any requirements as far, or I guess any levels of service? Does it raise anything as far as a level of service?
I don't remember there being a significant change. I mean, what you're going to do is add more left turns going back to the south.
Correct.
Obviously, that puts more traffic on Porter's Neck than what this access scenario that we currently have proposed does. But as far as the actual, um, numbers, I'd have to go back to that study and take a look at that.
Okay.
But I don't, don't recall there being some huge significant difference between the two, uh, scenarios in terms of traffic.
On, on that point, if I remember correctly, I believe the report, when it did split up the A and B options, I think the A option, if I recall, and you can correct me, because I'm doing this from memory, did, uh, consider both Market Street and Braves Drive full access or? And then, B was just Market Street with.
That's correct.
And then, it did make a recommendation, I believe, that A was preferable. So, I think at the bottom of that first page, it says, based on the TIA, either scenario is acceptable from a traffic operation standpoint, both satisfy requirements. However, additional connectivity and operational benefits offered by scenario A make it the preferred option for optimizing long-term network performance.
Yeah, you're referencing the MPO letter that's.
Correct.
Yeah.
The one that is on your screen.
Mm-hmm.
So, that is stating that there's a preference for A, to have Braves Drive open, correct?
That is the MPO's, um, perspective. Yes. At that time, that, when we did that study.
And I know the folks from Porter's Point are waiting for me to get outside of this meeting and, and get a hold of my ear. I understand that. And I understand, and it's been a while since I've been in that neighborhood. I understand the road is probably not in the best shape and putting more traffic on that is a serious concern for them. It was a major condition that they had the last time. So, but I think as an applicant, within the new scope of how we're looking at this project, within an SUP, I think the applicant needs to thoroughly look at that and address that why, which one makes the most sense? Because you've got an MPO, the staff in the last time we looked at this was coming in with the condition of having that to be full access. And we went with an emergency access as a condition that we sent to the commissioners.
Yeah, I think the thing that I would, would say, and I try not to get into the political situation here that's going on. I, I did work for the Department of Transportation for 10 years and before I started this firm. And the thing we have to look at is the road is not publicly maintained.
Correct.
So, that's the challenge that the burden is put on to the HOA. So, it's a little different. I mean, unfortunately, sad, whatever happened, the road never got accepted onto the system. So, what you're doing is having an unfunded mandate. That's an old school term. But you're saying, we're going to put traffic on the road and we're not going to, we're not going to maintain it.
Right.
And so, that's the challenge and why, as a professional, I would be a little careful about saying absolutely this has to happen. In a planning world where these, all these lines are just publicly maintained roads, absolutely it makes all the sense in the world. But in a situation where you have a road that's not maintained by a public entity, now you're going to have issues that, um, are outside of the, the control of this developer and also the property owners, they can't maintain it either. Now, at the level that's going to deteriorate once you add traffic to it. So, that's, that's just my, my two cents for that.
I think if Mr. Shipman was paying very close attention, he would take exactly what you just said verbatim and write that down. Because I think that's something with the county commission. That, that's essentially in some shape, the argument.
Yes.
The Braves Drive was a very huge source of contention for us when we looked at this last time. Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Yeah, so, and we're not disrespecting what the, the planning department said. You're right, it would be in a perfect situation.
Um, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Ms. Ron House.
Thank you, Chair. So, the purpose of this form is really to give advice to, to both parties, the applicant and those speaking oppositions. So, I'm going to try to be bipartisan in this advice as best I can. What I'm hearing are the four big issues are traffic, overcrowding of schools, flooding, um, stormwater issues, um, and home values. So, we just talked about traffic. I was going to bring up what Mr. Moore and the chair brought up, uh, that the preferred option is scenario A, which is will optimize long-term network performance. That is what WMPO said in their very recent approval. But that directly conflicts with what the public wants. They don't want traffic on that road. That's a kind of a conundrum. I think both parties need to kind of think about, um, about emphasizing, uh, you know, what, what they want with this traffic issue. I completely acknowledge that 2022 is, is an old TIA, um, but WMPO did approve this. So, we have that to, to deal with as well. Um, I think that a, a traffic expert needs to, i- if the public wants to fight this, I think you're going to need to unfortunately fund a traffic expert to look into this data. I'm not a traffic expert. I can't tell if it's great or not, so I'm not going to even bother. But I do acknowledge that a lot has happened in two-plus years, um, along that corridor, and I think it should be considered. Overcrowding of schools, again, um, I think both of you guys spoke to that. The flooding of, the flooding of the creek and the stormwater issue, again, you're going to need a professional engineer to speak to that. I'm an environmental engineer and, um, I, you know, we know, we know all about that. I need to have those credentials to be able to speak, um, to, to those, uh, to the impacts of that. And then, lower home values, again, um, I understand the concern of bringing in this type of development compared to the other homes around it and, um, how that could impact the home values. But once again, I think you're needing an expert to speak to that. So, you know, that's, that's my advice is to, to figure out a way to do that if you want to have a credible argument. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Ron House. Ms. Ryan.
Chair, thank you, Chair. I'll keep this pretty brief. Is my mic working? Thank you, Chair. I'll, I'll keep this fairly brief. But, um, I don't know, how many here remember when, uh, Market Street was two lanes going out in Porter's Neck? Uh, that was about the same time that, uh, Eastwood Road was two lanes going to Wrightsville Beach. A lot, and, and, and back at, at that point in time when it's two lanes, I'm guessing here, but it was probably four or five miles to get to a grocery store as well, if you lived out in that area. My point is that change is going to happen. A significant amount of change has happened. New Hanover County is one of the smallest counties in our entire state. The parcels of land available to develop to, to help quench the housing thirst from people coming from all over that want to live here, um, it, it's putting great pressure on the remaining parcels of land to be developed. So, the idea that we're going to see a lot more houses, R15 houses, that similar to what most of you in the audience who spoke, purchase, that, that train has left the station. And our leadership is challenged with, um, really having to go to a higher density to meet the, the needs, the housing needs of our county. So, new development is not going to look like what you have. That also feeds into this concept of, uh, the gentleman talking about his home value potentially going down. In my humble opinion, it's going to go the exact opposite. It's going to go up because there will be fewer and fewer, uh, homes that have a little more elbow room, if you will. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm not going to buy that, that, that home valuation argument. I think the applicant did a good job of, of listening. Certainly not to any of the opposition satisfaction. I, I get that. You, you, you just don't want this development in your backyard. And I totally respect and understand that. But that property is going to be, get developed and, you know, sometimes be careful for what you wish for. Uh, this applicant has, um, provided a greater buffer to the neighbors where there is existing R15 housing. The storm drainage, uh, you know, it's, it's such a technical issue. But storm drainage is going to be improved by this development as well as clearly we've talked about the, the right turn lane, uh, that they're going to extend, without using taxpayer money, extend that all the way down to the ABC station, uh, ABC store. So, uh, that, that right turn will be a, a safer move. So, it's, um, you know, nobody's going to get exactly what they want in all of this. But the reality is, uh, as, as a planning board member, we, we do look for quality development and it's, of course, that's going to be in the eyes of the beholder. But, you know, you see a developer coming in and they're not asking to max out the density. From what I can tell, looking at the land plan, they, they really have designed their project, um, specific to that parcel. So, um, you know, they're, they're not as evil as you, you, they probably feel like in your eyes. Uh, there is some good in this. But, um, uh, the decision to, to approve or not approve this is not at our pay grade. So, uh, it, uh, certainly the commissioners have a challenge in front of them.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Mr. Avery, unless you.
All right, then I'll be the final one here. And most of everything, I think, has been covered very well by the members of the board. They've highlighted, um, both for the applicant as well as the opposition, certain things that they should focus on as they move forward to the county commissioners. I'm not going to repeat all of them. I do have some notes, just a couple of things. For the applicant, I think, obviously, you've got more than capable legal counsel. Just a reminder to make sure that we touch on all the, all the findings that the commissioners are going to be, um, concerned with as they make their, um, as they make their decision. I think the one thing that we didn't hear from, which is fine here in our preliminary form, would be any type of testimony as to the adjacent property owners, um, and their, whether or not it would impact the real estate values or the values of their home. Um, that's just, again, just, um, a comment for the, for the applicant. I do think, and I do agree with, with Mr. Moore, that traffic is an issue and that the Braves Drive, um, is going to have to be addressed in a way in which it satisfies the commissioners' concerns. As they look to traffic, they're going to be considering safety. You know, is there a benefit? It's not just safety as well, but also that long-term planning. I think we do want to try as a county to, to do better at that. You know, if we do have, um, opinions from WMPO that this would better prepare us moving forward in that growth node, then it should be addressed and considered moving forward. And I do agree that, you know, the folks in, in Porter's Point are, are not, not going to be thrilled about that. But, um, it should just be addressed because I do think it's an issue. Um, just going through my notes, I mean, SUP, that process is for, and this is just a general comment, it's for everybody, um, to consider. It's because zoning is not a one-size-fits-all thing. Just because property says R15 doesn't mean that, uh, you can't have exceptions as designated in the, uh, the table of uses. There's a reason why you got a P next to certain things and then you have an S. And the S says that in certain circumstances, under certain conditions, that particular use or that particular density could be allowed um, after certain, uh, additional scrutiny by the county commissioners. And it would leave it up to them to make that decision. So, that's why we're here, is because the, the, the ordinance allows it and it allows in certain circumstances. Now, that said, it doesn't mean that it's automatically to be approved. And it doesn't mean that it's one-size-fits-all. Again, it's to take a, a look at those circumstances and that particular instance to determine whether or not it fits. For the opposition, I think it's been said, and I would just stress, that the SUP process is different from the legislative rezoning. And it is extremely important that you keep that in mind. It sounds like you've taken steps to, um, obtain legal counsel who can advise you. I would just point out that just because the applicant is here, um, or comes to the commissioners' meeting with their experts, does not mean that their application would automatically be approved. You have the opportunity to put forth your evidence. It's up to you to make sure that that evidence can be considered by the commissioners. You have to give the commissioners an opportunity to make a decision. And that burden is on you to produce that. So, just keep that in mind. And I'll end with this, more of a comment, um, about the process. I think most concerning for us, and it is for me, and this is a little bit of an editorial, so I apologize. But most concerning is that, um, but this board and the county commissioners repeatedly hears from experts that tell us one thing. And then, we repeatedly hear from members of the community who tell us that what these experts are saying doesn't meet the reality. And that puts us in a really difficult position. Because as somebody who does things for a living that are very similar to this, we rely on those experts to tell us how to move forward. But we also have a duty and a responsibility to every member of this community to try to make the best decision. And we hear you. And we live here and we see it as well. So, it's a struggle. And it's a struggle not just for us, but also for your commissioners and for staff and for everyone else. And we're trying to do the best job we can. But there is a pretty big gap and a chasm between what we get told, and not just this application, but on others and on most, and then what we hear from you, the members of the community. So, just keep that in mind. We're, we're doing our best to wade through it as well. We hear you. We see it. We're living it as well. I know that as you go forward to the county commissioners, you'll put forth, uh, your best arguments and your respective positions. I wish you, um, good luck and the best. And hopefully, it turns out for all of us the right way, whatever that is. At this time, unless there's anything else from any member of the board, I'll turn it over to staff, either Mr. Farrell or Ms. Roth, for the next steps in this process.
Thank you, yes. So, just wanted to kind of close out by saying that following this meeting, the application will go to. the application will go to the Board of Commissioners for a quasi-judicial hearing on Monday, February 3rd. It'll be here in the same room, starting, the meeting starts at 4:00 P. M. And again, as you've heard and we've said, but I'll repeat again, this will be a quasi-judicial hearing. Any evidence related to this case must be presented in person at the hearing and must be based on factual evidence and not opinion. Planning staff, we will be posting the staff report materials that will be sent to the Board of Commissioners on the county's development activity page by the close of business on this coming Monday for public review. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Does anyone else on the board have any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I shall now close the public forum. Ms. Roth, I do not think we have anything else on the agenda. Is there anything from staff that we need to touch on before we adjourn? Ms. Roth has said no. We will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion is made, second?
Second.
All's in favor. We shall adjourn.